Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here.
Tralka?
Here.
We'll have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Item number two, closed session. It's a resolution to proceed into closed session for discussion of information concerning physical and/or critical infrastructure, security, security procedures, and emergency preparedness where disclosure could reasonably be expected to jeopardize county property.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in open session. We are on to item number three, the recognition of Don Bosco High School for the Wrestling State Champions. Do you have anybody on from Don Bosco on Zoom?
Maybe we could come back to them later.
All right, we will move on to public comments and we'll come back to the recognition. Item number four, public comments. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to comment? Yes, sir. Approach the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Good morning. My name is Joe Patapa. I live at 5801 Wyden Road in the county. It's probably no stranger to the mudding situation on Wyden Road. I think my wife talked to
Yes.
Mr. Tralka, I don't know, last couple of weeks or something like that. Every year during heavy rains, or especially now during the spring thaw, people come and drive down the road. People have fought to close the road. I, in my opinion, I would like to see the road kept open. It seems there could be more done maybe with legislation. I know the county, as in the Sheriff's Department's hands, are pretty much tied, we call them, and they can't do much because there's nothing stating that you can't drive down the road even when it's, there's a sign that says it's impassable, but it doesn't say closed. I know other counties, even in Iowa, I think Washington County, I read on KWWL, they've passed county legislation that makes it a simple misdemeanor with possible jail time, a fine, and they're required to pay for any damages to the county to go back and fill or grade the road. Just last night, I didn't see till I woke up this morning, but our field just off the road, we live just north of the intersection of Rottning House and Wyden Road. They drove into our field and into our yard and our ditch. I have a two-year-old. My neighbors that live just south on the intersection, they're a newly married couple looking to start a family. I mean, we have concerns. Granted, it's usually late at night, not always. I know I've called the sheriffs in the afternoon. Last year, I tried to stop someone on the side of the road to tell him to please stay off, and I won't say they tried to run me over, but they accelerated at me. I mean, they didn't swerve at me or anything like that. I had to get out off the road. I've had people driving through the fields. I asked them, you know, if they had permission from the farmer, they said no. I said that you can't, you gotta stop driving. That's their livelihood. You can't be driving on their fields. Granted, right now in our field, there's nothing in there, so it's not really hurting anything except for making big ruts and stuff like that. But I guess we'd like to see something done rather than the reaction of let's just close the road. That seems to be people's, some people's reaction is let's just close it. I'd rather it stay open. I've made the argument that in times of flooding, historically, not always and usually not often, very honestly, that that's a last resort. In 2018, it almost was. Our road, Wyden Road, between McKeller and our house was flooded over. Water was inches away from Rottning House Road on the north side coming over the bike trail. And in 2018, all of the flooding that we were, not all of it, but the majority of flooding we were getting was coming from up north. The dirt road was wet, but was still passable. And if we would have gotten only a couple more inches of river height, that would have been the only road that wouldn't have been submerged in water. I have photos of that too that I can share at a later date. Right now, I'm just trying to get something moving, maybe that we could do to be proactive and say, you know, hey, we need to keep people off the road when it's wet. Maybe some punishments, maybe that would help. Some offsetting costs to help the county fix it when they do tear it up. Because when it's dry, last year, before the end of the year, the county had it graded and it was great. I drove it every morning to go to work and every morning, or every afternoon when I came home. It's just when it's wet that I'd like to see something that says it's closed, when it's wet or snowy. And that way, when I call the sheriff, they can actually, you know, do something. Because right now, there's nothing to be done and they, I mean, the mutters know that. They just, they leave and then they come back when the sheriff's not there. And I understand it's hard to catch them, but they do get stuck and then it's easy. I mean, they can't get out.
So it's mutters that are causing this problem?
Yeah, it's mutters. Everyone around knows. Other than, I have heard people, I know one guy last year, because he left, he was kind enough to leave a note on his windshield with his name and number, and I called him. And he said his GPS took him down the road. He was trying to go fishing. He couldn't, he got in too deep, he couldn't turn around, he got stuck. So, I mean, I get there's people that accidentally do it. But the majority of it, the other night, four or five trucks showed up and the, I mean, the only purpose was, they just kept going up and down and up and down. I know they're going into our neighbor's yard. Our neighbors put up like T-posts, not a full fence, but just T-posts to try and keep him off his yard. But
I think a good next step is, have you talked to anybody from the county engineer's office at all?
No, not this year. I mean, I've talked, we've talked to Kathy in the past, but yeah, not this, not this year. I mean, it's just now starting since the thaw, but.
And that'll be a good next step possibly for
Okay.
us as the board to address this as well. The sheriff is here, you can speak to him about enforcement in the area.
Yeah, I know, we've talked, or just the deputies in the past come out and they just, I mean, it's, they basically say that they're sorry, you know, there's nothing really that they can do because it's, what they're doing isn't technically illegal as long as they say, well, I just drove down the road, I didn't know. But then you see their car covered in mud and, I mean, you get it, that they made four or five passes down the road. They weren't just driving on the road, but I can't, can't prove that or anything like that. But yeah, I just, I would like to see something, and I'll talk to Kathy and I'll talk to the Sheriff's Department about, I don't know how they go about recommending
Yeah.
with the supervisors to
It's been a nuisance for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, about every year.
Those would be some good next steps.
Okay.
See what recommendations they can bring to us.
Thank you, Joe.
See how we can approve it.
Okay.
So, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Tom, Sarah.
All right, Don Bosco, we are back to item number three, recognition for Don Bosco High School in the Wrestling State Championships. Do we have any, who from Don Bosco is on Zoom?
Tom Hogan.
Tom?
Coach Hogan here, and three of the seniors, Kale Ronnavarty, Cody Brown, and Charlie Hogan are with us.
All right, why don't you explain some of their accomplishments for us, Coach?
Kale Ronnavarty was a runner-up this year. He got second at stake. Cody Brown was a district qualifier, and Charlie Hogan was one of our seniors that was in a tough spot on our team.
All right, well, nice job, men. The Board of Supervisors wants to recognize you for your efforts, your hard work, and all you did to represent the county at the championships. So thank you so much and great job.
Thank you. We appreciate the plaque here that we got.
You bet.
And Tom?
Thank you.
Tom, congratulations on your new coach. Great choice.
Yeah, I think they'll work out great here.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Coach.
Thank you.
You betcha. Claims and payments. There's a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
This week's expenditure is total $175,726.92. The larger items, jail commissary, $12,864, secondary roads, $36,361, JCS, $24,623, medical examiner, $13,977, maintenance, $22,300, and finally Sheriff's Department, $19,761. Everything looked normal.
Any questions for James?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? All right, Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Project updates from department heads and our elected officials. Kathy? Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Just very briefly this morning, the paved roads are in good condition as snow comes off of them begins to clear off the gravel roads. I guess the vast majority of them are in good condition. We haven't had too many complaints this summer, or excuse me, this winter. Lever C is, as I've told you in the past, just due to the volume of traffic on Lever C Road and the poor drainage, that does continue to be one of our problem areas, soft spots. We are continuing to get one or two complaints a week on that. But other than that, other than what we just heard this morning, the gravel roads are in pretty good condition. Out on Grundy Road, Mid-American, and Rural Water, they are continuing to move their utilities out of the way, and we're getting closer to the late start date for PCI to officially begin work on that contract, which will be the first week in April. Can I answer any questions?
Are the frost boils, do they seem like they're not as bad this year as they were last?
Correct. They don't seem as, they don't seem as deep and as widespread as certainly they were in 2019. So we're keeping our fingers crossed if the rain falls and continues to drain away that we seem to be in good, good condition out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other elected officials or department heads in the boardroom that would like to provide an update?
Yes, Board, I would like to provide an update in regards to COVID on this item. I have, on this, at this section, because I have a 10:00 AM meeting. We continue to vaccinate our community. As of last week, Thursday, about 70% of our 65 and older have been vaccinated. So that's, that's really good. And then we're working with our healthcare partners because we're looking at implementing a mass vaccination clinic. As long as we continue to get more vaccine, we'll at some point have to implement mass vaccination clinics. And we're looking at implementing these clinics perhaps over, during the weekends. Right now, we're visiting different sites to see what kind of availability of sites there are and also logistically what will work for Black Hawk County. But our partners are doing a fantastic job. They continue to meet the 80% threshold. So our weekly allocations have not changed. At the state level, I'm continuing to advocate for more vaccines for Black Hawk County. So we'll see what the next couple of weeks look like, but I wanted to at least give the Board a heads up that we are looking into mass vaccination clinics and we're visiting sites to see what's out there. I will be speaking to the Board of Health and then following up with the Board of Supervisors in regards to that.
Thank you.
Yep. And one last thing, Supervisor Tralka, we are also looking at how to best vaccinate individuals who are homebound, our homebound population. So do know that if you're getting calls in regards to family members that are homebound, that is something that we are working with our MCOs and our healthcare partners. So hopefully in the next week or so, we will have a plan for individuals who are homebound.
Thank you. Any questions for Nafisa? Any other department head or elected official wish to provide an update? All right, item number seven, approval of the minutes from March 9, 2021.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Hearings, we will have a hearing in regard to ordinance number 77-249, the Reed Rezone. And that will come later in the meeting. Onto the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Item number 10A, a resolution that the agreement between Black Hawk County and First Judicial District Department of Correctional Services, DCS, for purpose of providing supervision and alternative inmate housing for prisoners who would otherwise be placed in the Black Hawk County Jail and to provide intensive pre-trial supervision in the amount of $260,000 between July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, be approved and for the chair to sign.
That's the same amount we've been paying the last few years. They've held the line on it and they're doing a good job for us, so I move to approve.
Second.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Item 10B, a resolution that the contract between Black Hawk County and Jim Schrader Construction Incorporated of Bellevue, Iowa, letting held February 16, 2021, 10:00 AM for project BROS-SWAP-C007, in parentheses, 164, long dash, SE dash 07, for bridge replacement on Kimball Avenue over Miller Creek, FHWA 74420, with a total bid of $415,071.74. Late start date, August 23, 2021. Working days, 45. Liquidated damages, $1,000 per day. Be awarded and direct the chair to sign resolution authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract and to receive and place on file the contractor's bond and certificate of insurance as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Kathy?
Yeah, I would like to recommend that you approve this contract with Jim Schrader. They have done work for us in the past. They do a nice job build their bridges to DOT specifications. And I would recommend that you approve it.
Any questions for Kathy?
What was the estimated amount?
So the engineer's estimate was approximately $329,626. So we're approximately 26% over that. As I told you in the past, all of the bids were over the engineer's estimate. We're hopeful that this is just a blip. These are one or two-year high, high costs for our bridge replacement. Many counties and cities are seeing the same high prices in the bids that have been received since late fall and then early this year. So I recommend that we stay the course and we replace this structure down on Kimball.
Any other questions? Kathy, yes, you had more.
I was just gonna say, I think I explained to you last week about how we're funding this. This is federal bridge money and we receive an allocation every year. We are allowed to borrow ahead on those funds, and so we would be doing that by building the two bridges that we have recommended to you this year. Thank you.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Resolution 11A, that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same to purchase one hydraulic breaker in the amount of $25,300 from Murphy Tractor Waterloo, Iowa.
I'd like to see us hold off on that, looking at the cost of it and see, saying Kathy said she uses it five to 10 days a year. And the cost of rent one is $2,500 for that same period of time, for a week or 10 days or whatever it was. That would take 10 years to pay for. And if we're only using it 10 days, then it sits around 50 weeks out of the year. I think that it's not a good use of taxpayers' money.
Kathy, can you provide comment to that?
So I did explain to you all our, the reason why we wanted to purchase the, this. Currently, we use a wrecking ball. We feel this is a much safer way to demolish an old concrete bridge or an older box culvert or a large culvert. It's a better way to control the debris from flying everywhere. We, I did give you some rental rate prices, and yes, they do vary from approximately $2,500 to $3,200 a week. One of the reasons we don't like the rental is that it's hard for us to forecast exactly when we're going to be out doing, say, a bridge demolition, for example. We can forecast it, but then when it comes to the actual day where we need the piece of equipment, sometimes it's not available from mid-country or the place where we need to rent the piece of equipment. Another aspect that our mechanics tell us is that with rented equipment, we sometime, oftentimes, we don't know what the hydraulic, the equipment that it's been attached to in the past maybe have contaminated hydraulic fluids, so we don't, usually we don't want that flowing into our excavator, for example, that hydraulic equipment. We don't want it to cross-contaminate our excavator.
It doesn't look like we had problems in the past with it.
Right, so we haven't, I believe we've only rented one of these very occasionally. We typically have used the wrecking ball method of demolition.
Now, when you said safer, you mean safer for your workers, I'm assuming, or the people working with that is?
Right, safer for the workers. Like I said, it's easier to control the debris, the waste product that's coming off of the bridge and the concrete box or the concrete culvert.
Kathy, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Why, I understand this is FY21 money.
Right.
Why now, after nine months, there's only three months left in this fiscal year? I mean, you didn't feel the need to use it the last nine months?
So as I've told you throughout this, this year, we've been, back in July, just due to the COVID, the DOT forecasting or unable to forecast what the road use tax funds would be doing, that stream of funding for us, we decided to defer some expenses back in the beginning of the fiscal year. I think I've told you, we would look at that every quarter. We looked at purchasing a few things back in December. And now in the latter part of this fiscal year, we would like to finish buying three or four more items, and this being one of them. It was
Is this a good guess, this won't be used this fiscal year with three months left?
Probably, but I can't guarantee, I don't know for sure. I
The only thing I want to make sure, Kathy, and I'm not saying this is the case, is departments tend at the end of the fiscal year to start buying things just because they got money in their budget. And we only have three months left. You haven't used it for the last nine months. You probably won't use it for the next three months. So it kind of looks like to me we're just buying it to buy it because we have the money in the budget.
Well, I would say our need for it is the same as it was a year ago when we asked you to buy it or when we, you know, a year ago last February. Correct, we haven't, we probably would not use it unless the bridge crew starts demolition of our first bridge, and I don't know if that will take place in May or June. I think we're hopeful that it will, but I can't, I don't know. I haven't talked to the staff about when the scheduling would be. It is possible that we would be able to start with the bridge crew demolishing our first bridge before July 1.
Did you indicate this was a, Lynn just said something about a safety factor?
Yeah, how many years, how many years have we been using a wrecking ball? For probably forever.
I believe, yes, I could, yes.
How many people have been injured?
None, but that doesn't mean it's not a safety concern that we shouldn't consider other ways of going about demolishing our structures.
Wrecking ball would be faster, I'd bet, too. Getting a bridge, or getting it torn out quicker with a wrecking ball than you would a hydraulic breaker.
I don't know about that aspect of it.
I did notice now, this, the Murphy Tractor bid was $25,300, which was considerably less than the other two?
Yes. Yes, we had budgeted $30,000 as of, like I said, February early 2020 when we were putting our budgets together. We had solicited bids from three companies, and yes, Murphy is able to provide us this piece of equipment for less than we budgeted. I don't know all the differences between the other two that we received the bids on. One bid was $42,000, another bid was $39,000.
This nor used?
This would be a new purchase, a purchase of a new hydraulic breaker.
Kathy, the last question I have for you, are we over that you know of of any line item in your budget? Nine months into the fiscal year, are you gonna be possibly over, whether it be fuel, salt, sand, et cetera, anything?
I would think that we're not. In looking at our capital line FY21 budget, if we are allowed
More about the operating budget and so forth?
So far, so good, Tom. We're, you know, salt's been fine. We still have to take delivery of about a quarter of the salt. We purchased a quarter to a third of that. Diesel fuel has been fine. Parts and labor have been fine.
And like you said, we delayed this because of COVID and
Right, we were
on some of the expenses.
Just wanted to make sure that we, we had the money to buy, to purchase these items.
And we had approved it, and okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
No.
Tralka?
No.
Item 11B, a resolution that the request for capital or purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and direct the chair to sign the same to purchase 10 overhead doors in the amount of $46,000 from Overhead Door Company of Waterloo, Iowa.
So moved.
Second. Kathy?
So I sent you some information about this purchase. Again, we have delayed it just because we wanted to make sure that we could afford this purchase. It was approved in the FY21 budget. We did also have it budgeted to buy five doors in FY20 budget. As we went through the budget process, you had asked me, why don't you just buy all the doors you need on those two buildings? However, we never amended the budget before it was approved, because that was like two weeks before it was approved. So our budget last year was $24,500. We did have to replace a door in La Porte City due to a windstorm that we took the money right out of that budgeted amount. Then we decided we would just defer. We would, we did budget that same thing for the next fiscal year. However, we did not budget enough just due to the increase in costs of construction, construction materials right now. So this would be seven new doors for the west shed and then three new doors for the main shop, all of the Longfellow facility.
So this will be all of them, Kathy?
On those two buildings, yes.
What we originally talked about in FY20?
Yes.
Because I think I was the one that said at the original time when you were wanting five to, why don't we just do them all at once?
Right, that we could get a better price.
The only concern I had is we had it listed in 20, it must have been a priority, and here we are, late in 21, that they're still operational, so they obviously do need it. I mean, we've gone almost two years without replacing them when we originally were going to.
Sure, they're 50-year-old doors. We
Yeah, I understand. I understand that. I think we need to get it done, but I think it should have been done back in 20. We did have that emergency one out of La Porte. I think we should have probably handled that separate rather than taking money from the one item that we had handled that separate, rather than taking money from the one item that we agreed to.
Well, I think it was our suggestion to do them all, wasn't it, at the same?
Yeah, it was.
Yes.
So, that's why we did it.
I just, I just, when something's brought to me at budget time, I expect that we probably should do it, or it doesn't really need it. And this is two years down the road, but no, I agree, we need to replace, uh, all of them there, and be done with it.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item 11C, a resolution at the tax sale certificate assignment for 532 Sumner Street in Waterloo, parcel eight-nine-one-three-dash-two-four-dash-two-five-five-dash-zero-zero-eight, located in Waterloo, Iowa. Pursuant to code four-four-six-point-three-one, be approved, and said certificate of purchase of tax sale be assigned to Michael and Kathleen Oswald, as recommended by Rita Schmidt, county treasurer.
Second.
Rita?
The property is a small house there on 532 Sumner, it's about four thousand behind in taxes. Uh, Michael and Caitlin Oswald had approached and had, um, asked for the assignment and compromise, to fix up the property, and to, um, get it back on the tax rolls. So, their, uh, compromise amount, uh, which is the next, uh, step, uh, they're asking for a compromise of nineteen hundred dollars, due to the condition of the property, and the special assessments and that, that are coming up on it. So, uh, I recommend that we do the assignment, because with their improvement to the property, it'll increase the valuation. Right now, land and house is sixteen thousand, so with them fixing it up, uh, it'll be more tax money that we'll be able to collect.
And I think you mentioned something in your email, about the sidewalks being repaired, and they would be taking care of that.
Yes, the sidewalk repair is a new assessment, that's going to first take place in September of 21, so that's not part of this compromise, so they're aware, there's, uh, nine-hundred-and-ten dollars just on specials, that they will be paying because of the sidewalk repair. So, they kind of kept that in mind with, uh, this, uh, because he would have fixed the sidewalk also, because, uh, he's in that type of work, but, uh, it was already done by the city and assessed, so, there is another charge of, uh, nine hundred dollars plus, that would be, uh, due for them, once they take deed to the property.
Okay, any more questions for Rita?
Yeah, Rita, one question, uh, do they live there, next door, or?
No, they do not, uh, they live in Tripola, and he has been working on different properties in, uh, Blackhawk County and surrounding counties, and, uh, this is a business of his, and, uh, he, he, uh, is improving properties in each county that he's working in, so, I have met him several times, a very, um, direct gentleman, and, um, he's eager to get started on the project. He has to go through the procedure to take, uh, get tax sale deed on it first, which will delay several months, but, uh, he's hoping to get in and work on it. But, there's been no interest in neighbors on either side of wanting this property.
Um, has, we dealt with this individual before?
No, we have not. Uh, he is a new gentleman, uh, asking for, um, houses that we would have certificates on, and this is one that he had, um, he actually has two in mind, and he wanted to do one process first, and then, um, uh, finish this, and then, possibly in the future, ask for another assignment on another property. But, um, his goal is to fix it, and either turn it around and sell it, uh, or, uh, rent it out, and that was his thoughts. We don't have any interest from, like Habitat for Humanity, or anything on these houses, so they just kind of sit dormant, and, um, and specials get, uh, charged against the property, because no one's maintaining them, so, um, it's, I, I know he's not a neighbor, but, uh, I, I fully think that he will, uh, follow through with what he's stating, and, uh, and again, any improvement in a property will bring us more tax money in the future, so, that's why, and the county will not be pursuing it, because of the condition of the property, so.
Yeah, one question for Legal?
Yeah, Tom, go ahead.
Mike, um, uh, by doing this, um, do we have any obligation to offer this to other people? Or, can we just arbitrarily award this to one individual? It sounds like you may be doing it more for, uh, business ventures. Are we okay by doing this, or, um, when we do, um, when we have properties, and we did the auctions, it was open to the public? Um, this is kind of similar to, can we do it this way, or is everything all right?
My understanding is, this has already been offered at tax sales, is that correct, Rita?
Yes, it was offered at tax sale for two years, and there was no interest, and then, uh, after that two-year process, the county is forced to take the certificate, and that's where we're seeing these assignments. Uh, we, um, are in a situation where, in the past, I have contacted, uh, neighbors, and they don't have any interest in it, because of the, the cost. It's, uh, maintaining the property and that, so, uh, I haven't had much success with that in the past, uh, and if he's willing to fix it up, maybe that'll help with the neighborhood improving, too.
Did you check with the neighbors in this case, Rita?
I have not, no.
And you said you did check with Habitat, Humanity?
Habitat for Humanity is more interested in building from scratch, because when they come into these properties-
But you did check, you did check, you did check with them?
Yeah, Habitat has no interest in it.
Okay.
To address your question, Mr. Little, because of the fact that, um, that we've already gone through the code-required tax sale procedure, I don't see any problem, uh, with us going ahead, agreeing to a compromise, since we took, uh, the tax sale certificate in this matter, and I believe, Rita, we've done this in the past as well.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, I've seen this done before.
Much success, uh, every, everyone that we have, uh, had assignments for, and they did improvements to the property, uh, they have kept their taxes, I keep check on that, make sure the taxes are kept up, and, uh, everyone that we've done assignments in the past have done that, and improved the property in some way or form, so, it, it's always been, uh, a plus for the county with, uh, with these assignments so far.
Yeah, I have no problem with this, I just want to make sure that the neighbors on either side weren't interested in the land, um, themselves, so, that would be the only concern I'd have.
It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
11D, a resolution at the compromise, offered in the amount of nineteen hundred dollars by Michael and Caitlin Oswald on taxes owed for 532 Sumner Street, Waterloo, parcel eight-nine-one-three-dash-two-four-dash-two-five-five-dash-zero-zero-eight, located in Waterloo, Iowa, be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item 11E, a resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County and Pratt Tom Incorporated, regarding the forensic review of servers be provide, be approved, as recommended by Kim Veder, Information Technologies Director.
So moved.
Second.
Kim?
Um, Mike had a chance to review the agreement, and he didn't.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Mike had a chance to review the agreement, and, do you have any comments?
There's no money involved?
Yes, there is, it's a fee, uh, hourly fee.
Uh, what's, how come that's not on there? How do we?
It's the way it was put on there, I'm sorry.
Is there a max that we're going, or open door, or what?
Yeah, I know, the agreement does not have a maximum amount.
I, I can read from the agreement, if you want, uh, Mr. White.
I appreciate that, sir.
You bet, there are, there are certain tasks, that would be three-hundred-and-fifty dollars per hour, uh, there are certain tasks, that would be five-hundred dollars per hour, per device, there are certain tasks, that would be seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars per device, those would be, uh, mobile devices, and there's, uh, certain charges that are two-hundred dollars per device, and that's for wiping or sanitation, uh, I believe that's in, uh, electronic terms, of course, uh, but the total is to be determined, this is an open-ended contract, and it's dependent upon the number of devices, and the specific tasks that are performed, which would be billed hourly.
Thank you, Mike.
So, as we proceed, we, uh, would be kept updated-
Yes.
-on the issues, concerns, cost.
Yep.
Where would this money come from?
Right now, what, uh, what we have is, we have enough budget in, uh, the IT budget to cover this, uh, if absolutely need be, we can, you know, pull from different sources, if, if we have to, but there's, there should be enough in, in the IT budget, as it stands right now.
And we had an estimate, or I think you worked on it, an estimate or approximate number, didn't you? Not just these per device?
Yeah, so, so the assumption was that it was going to take about twenty-four hours, twenty-five hours, which would total about, uh, eight-thousand-seven-hundred dollars, so, um, that would be the approximate, obviously, that's-
That's just the hourly cost, right? That's not the, all the, all the different-
Well, I think the rest of the contract, we're talking about specific, I think it was their whole list of things that they do, so.
Yeah, that, that's, that's where our assumption is, is at, is right now, that it should, it should take no more than eighty, eighty-five, eighty-seven-hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Can we put a cap on there of, say, um, ten thousand dollars, and if it goes beyond that, it needs to come back to the board for approval, because I don't like the way it's, we're voting on it today, it, it's a blank check that we're voting on today. So, can we set a cap of ten thousand? If it exceeds that, it needs to come back to the board of supervisors for further explanation and approval.
Who made the motion? Chris, or Linda?
I did.
You did? Okay, Linda agrees to that, who seconded it?
Yes.
That's good.
Ten thousand cap, yeah, I agree, I said, have it come back, if it's anything over that, that'd be great, thank you.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item 11F, a resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment, submitted by Kim Veder, Information Technology Director, be approved, and direct the chair to sign for same, to purchase tablets and docking stations for ten-thousand-nine-hundred-thirty-four dollars, from Sterling Computers, CDW-g, to be used by the health department.
Yeah, and it's really just CDWG, I didn't catch that she put Sterling on there.
So, we should remove Sterling Computers?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, because I was going to say, never, we've never bought those before, have we, Sterling?
Um, we've used Sterling before, but it's primarily Dell Computers.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Any more comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote.
Is this rotation?
Yes, it is, and it's budgeted, so.
Mr. Veder?
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item 11G, it's our hearing on the proposed ordinance number seven-seven-dash-two-four-nine, the REED rezone.
Motion received and placed on file, proof of publication.
Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Motion away from the first reading.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seth?
Okay, uh, yeah, this is a request to rezone two-point-seven-four acres from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district, in order to construct one new single-family home, uh, located east of eight-zero-zero-six Winslow Road. Um, it was moved by Bozier and Segal by Stage, uh, to deny the request to rezone two-point-seven-four acres from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district, in order to construct one new single-family home. Motion denied, carry two-two, with Nagel and Schaefer, uh, voting to approve the request. Uh, Bozier and Schae, uh, and Sage noted, they did not want land to be taken, uh, out of the CRP Conservation Reserve Program, that could be potentially buildable in the future. Um, this, uh, property location is not located in the hundred-year floodplain, or five-hundred-year floodplain, neither for the, uh, preliminary FEMA map, or for the existing two-thousand-eleven map. And all, basically, uh, and then, uh, it has a low agriculture, at least a score of one-seventy-nine, so it's not considered prime farmland. Yeah, this was a, this was a mistake made by me two and a half years ago. Um, I was looking at a, a lot, thought it was a lot of record, um, the slide is where that bend is, on Winslow Road. Basically, it was like one of the properties that Dollstrom purchased, and, you know, there was like a couple rezones that did not go through. Um, it was twenty-eight acres, they're just requesting to put one home on the property. A rezone request was approved last month, uh, by, by you folks, uh, for a property that was just south of this one. Um, I guess Planning and Zoning Commission proved that one, because it was in trees, and not, not on, uh, vacant ground. And I'll explain what happened. Uh, it should be noted that, uh, when planning and staff spoke with the applicant, when they purchased their twenty-eight-point-two-eight acre parcel, that staff was under the false assumption that the lot that they purchased was a lot of record, and that was my mistake. Uh, that existed prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance, which was approved on November eighteenth, nineteen eighty-two. A lot of record, that has not been changed or altered, since the adoption of zoning ordinance is considered a buildable lot. Once staff discovered the error made in two thousand eighteen, the applicant was, uh, contacted directly. Staff then worked with the applicant to find a rezone area that was not located within a hundred-year, or five-hundred-year floodplain, is designated by FEMA, um, on the two-thousand-eleven map, which is currently in effect, and the FEMA preliminary firm map, which will be adopted by the county in the future. Uh, planning staff, therefore, worked, worked with the applicant to correct the error, and make sure that they had a portion of their lot that was buildable, also outside of the floodplain. And, uh, so, um, basically, since it was a two-two, need a supermajority, or at least a four-five vote, to approve this request. Um, I just want to humbly apologize to you folks for making this error. Um, I do, we do know why the error occurred. Basically, the lots were, are exactly the same they were in nineteen eighty-two, it's just that a portion on the other side of Winslow Road was sold in two thousand and seven, which messed up the, the, uh, basically lot of record status, the parcel's looking exactly the same. Uh, but what we're going to do in the future is, I'm going to work with, uh, Eric Schroder, my supervisor, and before we call anything a lot of record, we're going to put two sets of eyes on it, just to make sure that, I don't, I don't want to put you guys in a rough spot. Um, I apologize for, for the REEDs, apologize to you folks, I also apologize to the Planning and Zoning Commission for my error, and for being here today. Um, I'm just basically, uh, trying to, uh, fix a mistake, and I, I do humbly apologize for that. Uh, just want these folks to be able to build a home on their lot. Um, the, the REEDs, uh, basically indicated that they didn't even plan on building until, uh, two thousand twenty-six, when the pro, uh, the CRP, uh, program, uh, contract expires. And, uh, they're just gonna, uh, this two-point-seven acres, um, they're just going to use that to build their home, and, uh, basically, the rest of it's just going to go right back into CRP, so, um, I don't know, that's, that's what I have for-
Do we have any type of agreement on that? I mean, them stating that that's what their intention is?
Um, I, uh, I, I, I do not, but I've had, uh, conversations with the REED, and REED is on the phone, Jacob is. Uh, basically, uh, they, they don't want to, they don't want to touch the contract, because they don't want it up having to pay or owe money to the federal government, uh, so they're just going to let it expire, and then, just this little portion where they want to build a home, they'll take that out of CRP, and then the rest will just go back into CRP.
Seth, did you say this was denied by Planning and Zoning?
Y-yes, yeah, it was a, a two-two vote, um, they, uh, they denied it because it was CRP round.
Yeah.
And, and usually, that, that's kind of like a, a new thing for the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, we don't really even discuss CRP in the zoning ordinance at all, uh, but they're just, you know, trying to, you know, protect potential farmland in, in the future, uh, but that was, you know, they thought it could be tillable, uh, even though it's considered low agricultural value land, um, but, uh, that's kind of, that's why they, they denied it, uh, never really had anything denied like that before, so, this is something we'll probably look into CRP, i-if this is something that we should add or change with the zoning ordinance, if, if this is something that they want to do, or in the future. Uh, but like I said before, I'm, I'm just trying to make things right for the, for, for the REEDs, and, uh, and I'm, I'm sorry, folks, for, for being here, and-
I could see why the, like I say, the, um, CRP issue came up, because it is such a large parcel there, that's not got anything to compromise it at all, and this property was first thing in that area.
Yep.
I'm assuming you looked at other options, this was just maybe the one that worked?
Yeah, the, the rezone option just seemed like it was the best and cleanest thing Yeah, the, the rezone option just seemed like it was the best and cleanest thing to do in, in order to just have a buildable portion on the lot. And like I said before, they don't plan on, I mean, you could, Mr. Reed's on the phone if you have questions for him, but they don't plan on taking this side of CRP till their contract's done. And they plan on putting the majority of the land back into CRP after they build their home and they're in no rush to build the home.
And DS Development's no longer involved?
No, not, not.
This is just private owner?
Yeah, they, they purchased it from DS Development and they purchased it because I thought it was a buildable lot because the lots didn't change. What changes that one half got sold off in 2007 and I missed that. And so, I don't know, I'm just trying to.
Straighten it out.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Straighten it out and, you know.
Stuff happens.
As a, you know, you know, county staff member, you know, I, if I make a mistake, I'm going to own up to it.
Seth, the mistake is a bridge between inexperience and wisdom if we learned from it, right?
Oh, very, very true, Supervisor Felka. I, I don't know, I've, I've felt bad about this one, but all I could do was come back in here, apologize, pray for the best and try my best to, to fix it for these folks because it was no fault of their own, it was my mistake.
So, other than the CRP issue though, you see no issues with this?
No, no, we don't, yeah, because we don't really discuss CRP in the zoning ordinance, but I mean, that's something if, if the planning and zoning commission or board of supervisors wants to protect in the future, that is something that we can definitely change. Everything's more predicated on what's considered prime farmland and this isn't considered prime farmland.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed, would you like to provide comment?
Other than to say that Seth's 100% correct, we just want to keep that ground in CRP. That's full, our full intention even once the contract is up in 2026. We, we did purchase it with the, under the assumption that it was a lot of record, but yeah, Seth's been spot on. He's been great the entire process, you know, we just, just want to be able to build our home that we can live on for quite a long time.
Why do you, did the planning and zoning deny it because of the CRP?
That is almost verbatim what they said in our last meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
I believe that's all the more reason for us to get some appointments made at the P&amp;Z so we avoid having two-two decisions. Be a good one.
Yeah, and I, I worry the adding, if we add CRP language, you got to think real careful because I don't want to have it be a disincentive for someone to put land into CRP if they say, oh, if I want to change, I'm going to have to deal with the county also. So, that's kind of interesting.
Yeah, because it's a, it's a federal program.
Right.
I mean, it's a contract between landowners and the federal government and it's not a contract with the county. So, you know, I can understand, you know, protecting, you know, farm ground, that's, that's what our zoning ordinance is predicated on, but this is actually low-quality farm ground, but we'll, I don't know, maybe, I'll probably have some more future discussions regarding the CRP, but yeah, this is something that's not a county affair. This is between the landowner and the federal government to settle aside land for, you know, environmental purposes or, or other reasons.
Do we have any oral or written comments?
No written comments, Mr. Jeff.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing as oral, written comments were received and placed on files.
Okay.
Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on a proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote to suspend the rules.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
We will now have the ordinance adoption at the ordinance, amending ordinance number 36 as amended, the Blackhawk County, Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999 by adding section number 249 to section six, paragraph B, rezoning certain properties as described on the above requests submitted by Jacob Reed and to consider the same for adoption and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number 77-249.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto item 11H, discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19. Anybody have anything?
No, keep the vaccinations coming.
And again, I'd like to, I'm going to explore and research at what point, at what threshold do we have to reach so we can modify or change the county policy to wear masks in the courthouse? I don't want to push it, but also I don't want to wear masks forever.
So, what are you going to research?
Well, I'll talk to the health department. I will ask the experts on Facebook and.
Oh, please.
I will come back with something.
Okay.
At some point in the future. I just don't want us to lose sight of that.
There's a lot of them on here.
I think we.
A lot of experts.
Need to be reminded on a regular occasion that that's something is, we need to discuss in the future.
Right.
Any reports or information from the board?
Nope, just, just celebrating the, the signing of the American Rescue Plan. It's going to be a big opportunity for, for counties and cities to help stimulate the economy and, and, and get through the rest of this pandemic. So, it's, it's a big opportunity for us.
I do want to, this weekend, they apparently stripped and took care of the floors in the courthouse and.
Looks nice.
They look great.
Yep.
So, they did a good job.
Just this floor so far.
Just, we just need to work on the bathroom on the second floor.
Got to work on that. Oh, and probably the P&amp;Z appointments, we need to probably schedule those two interviews.
Yes, James?
Get it.
We can find two supervisors.